Item E, please.
Item E, consideration of an urgency ordinance providing interim rent stabilization and/or just cause eviction protections to tenants in advance of California Assembly Bill 1482.
Sure. Hold on, please. Irene, Vice Mayor.
Because I am a landlord in San Bruno and this would have an impact, however it goes, could have a potential impact on my income, I'm going to recuse myself from this and I'm also going to leave. So this is my last council meeting and I will miss you all and I hope you -- I see you're all engaged in this. I hope you find other things to be engaged in and continue to come to council meetings, at least on occasion. Our agendas are on our city website, so don't be focused only on one thing, look at the whole city. So thank you, staff. I will miss you all, but I'm sure I'll see you once in a while.
Okay, now we will come to the City Manager, please.
Yes, so to the mayor, council, members of the public. We are here tonight to talk about the consideration of an urgency ordinance providing interim rent stabilization and/or just cause eviction protections to tenants in advance of California Assembly Bill 1482. And so this is on our agenda because at the very last council meeting on November 12th, we had a member of the public that had received an eviction notice and a few additional members of the public speak up in support of that individual. And the City Council requested that staff look into the matter and bring back information. And so we have done that, and so I will now turn it over to Community and Economic Development Director Darcy Smith to give a presentation about options for the City Council to consider.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Darcy Smith, the City's Community and Economic Development Director, and I have been tasked with the City Attorney of drafting this urgency ordinance that I'll present tonight. I'll make my presentation quick, and first I'll start with the objective for tonight's meeting, cover some quick background of how -- why we are here tonight, summarize this new state law, which is commonly referred to as Assembly Bill or AB 1482, but its official name is the Tenant Protection Act of 2019. I'll cover the urgency ordinance in a little more detail and present the possible action for you tonight, and we'll also have time at the end for any questions. The objective for this item tonight is for you to consider an urgency ordinance that has two separate provisions. It's an and/or option. It would -- one part is rent stabilization and the second part is just cause eviction protections. As the City Manager mentioned at your last City Council meeting, you had a member of the community step forward and that speaker expressed concern that others may receive eviction notices. And we have also heard from organizations that support these tenants supporting that concern. So because of that background, we prepared the ordinance. The state law, which will go into effect, has two parts, as I mentioned. The first part is an annual rent cap. That goes into effect January 1st, and what it will do is impose the rent cap on the certain units. It is 5% plus the Consumer Price Index. The Consumer Price Index has been quite high recently in April, which was the benchmark for this year's rent increase. It was 4%. So that means the maximum rental increase would be 9%. The just cause eviction protections are a little more complicated. It's not as simple as math. They apply to tenants who have been there at least 12 months, requires certain landlords to have the valid no-fault reason. So what's a no-fault reason? They're specified in the law, but essentially the most common ones would be if an owner or family member needs to move into the unit, or if the owner intends to demolish or do substantial remodeling of that unit. And there's more examples, but these are again two kind of common ones that might resonate. If the valid reason is no-fault, there is a requirement for relocation assistance of one month's rent or other specific financial support. So at-fault just cause, what's that? It's sort of more significant things like non-payment of rents, criminal activity on the property, very significant property nuisance, and there's other things in the law, but those are kind of the more common ones. There's also a long list in state law of units that are excluded. The main thing is new construction, so those that's rolling and those are projects that have been issued a certificate of occupancy right now in the previous 15 years. Deed restricted affordable housing units or other covenant-recorded properties. Single-family homes or condos that have no corporate ownership, owner-occupied homes with no more than two tenants, including accessory dwelling units, duplexes, but only if the owner lives in another unit, and other provisions. And again, it doesn't apply to tenants who have been residing in the units for less than 12 months. This urgency ordinance, so essentially what would it do? It would basically enact state law. Again, there's two provisions. In order to enact an urgency ordinance, I think the last one you had was maybe last year around marijuana, but there has to be a current and imminent threat to the public peace, health, safety, or welfare. So as we stated, why are we here tonight? Committee has come forward, it's been substantiated through organizations in the community. It's important to note, it requires a four-fifth's vote, and since we have one abstention, that means all four of you would have to vote in favor tonight, and if approved, it goes into effect immediately. Unlike typical ordinances require first reading, introduction, and then adoption, the state law governing these urgency ordinance means it takes effect right now because there's again this current threat. And it typically expires in 45 days unless it's renewed, but because we would have state law going into effect January 1st, this would be as drafted, set to expire on December 31st. Also important to emphasize that under state law, these specific provisions are enforcement by private cause of action brought by the tenant. And there are organizations in the community that would support those tenants that exist already, such as the Legal Aid Society, who have already, to my knowledge, been supporting those tenants. So the proposed urgency ordinance would again do two things. One component would extend those interim protection to tenants. And who would that ordinance cover? It would cover tenants who have been in their unit for 12 months as of December 31st, who have received eviction notices that have not expired as of the effective date of the urgency ordinance, and whose landlords do not otherwise qualify for an exemption under the state laws I mentioned. So there's two main parts, pretty simple. Section 3, as drafted in the draft ordinance, implements the just cause eviction requirement, identical to the requirement established in state law. It refers to state law. Section 4 would implement rent stabilization provisions in San Bruno from the date of adoption, which could be tonight, to December 31st. It would be equivalent to those rent caps that are established in state law, which I mentioned are 9% currently. That's the more complex component of the urgency ordinance, and some things for council to consider, which were mentioned in the staff report, are that there may be no significant benefit. AB 1482, when it was drafted, considered this sort of rent gouging that might occur after the state law was signed into effect was in October. So it specifies that there's a rent rollback to March 2019 values. So tenants, though, whom might have received a notice of rent increase, may be unable to afford it. It's possible, you know, if they were served with it, it could challenge their finances, and they could be affected if they would face eviction before the end of the year. Those are the two components. Your options tonight, you have four options. You could adopt the urgency ordinance with both components that would implement the just cause for evictions from residential tenancies and the rental rate limits as defined in the state law. Could adopt the urgency ordinance limited to just the just cause for evictions. As I mentioned, the rental rate component is a little more complex and governed by other parameters. You could simply decline to adopt the ordinance, or the motion to approve it could fail without four votes. Or you could provide additional direction to staff regarding the provision of the ordinance. However, then we'd get back to you at the next meeting, which is in December. That's shrinking the window for this to be in effect as we get closer to January 1st. So that concludes my staff report. Myself and Mark Zaffroni, the City Attorney who worked on this, are happy to answer any questions you have.
Anything from the City Manager before I open to the public?
No, I just want to thank Darcy Smith and her team, especially Pamela Wu, our Housing and Planning Manager, that really worked extremely hard over this, on this, over the last two weeks, as well as the City Attorney, who did a lot of research, talked to a lot of organizations and people at the State. And so we're here awaiting your discussion and able to answer any questions.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and go to the speakers in case you need to get home. I'm understanding there are 16 speaker cards for this topic this evening. I'm going to ask for it to be kept to two minutes or less. If you don't use all two minutes, that's okay, but two minutes or less. We're going to call a couple names up. If you would go ahead and start to make your way to the podium so we could keep the flow going. I'd ask the audience, no applause or comments, pro or con, so everybody has that same respect and opportunity during their time to speak. So speakers, please, cards.
Arus Harmon, followed by Evelyn Benitez.
As I think all of you know, I live in the Bel Air neighborhood where my spouse and I bought, we were renters. I was a renter around the Bay Area for 20 years before I bought. And just speaking as a landlord now, I think the actions of landlords to attempt to force people to move out before these protections come into force are vile. And, you know, I am not generally a fan of price controls. I'm a bit of a neoliberal shill in terms of thinking that, you know, we need to have market incentives to produce more housing, but I find AB 1482 completely reasonable in terms of allowing adequate increases over time, and so I hope the council will be adopting the ordinance.
Evelyn Benitez, followed by Alex Melendez.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Evelyn Benitez, and I work for the Legal Aid Society of San Mateo County. I am here to stay our agency's support for the adoption of the urgency ordinance providing immediate rent stabilization and just cause eviction protections to the tenants of San Bruno before the Tenant Protection Act takes effect January 1st. One reason that I like to stress is that the just cause eviction protections in AB 1482 would not only provide specific reasons for outfall evictions, but it would also provide relocation assistance to tenants with no-fault eviction. That is, it would provide a payment equal to one month's worth of rent to help facilitate their move. I believe that it is unfair that landowners could take advantage of this window, the eviction window, that is between the date that AB 1482 was signed until it takes effect January 1st, to just evict their tenants without no fault of their own. The financial burden that tenants face in moving, especially for low-income tenants, is unbearable. Tenants undergo many financial hardships. Tenants are expected to pay rent to the current landowner until the notice expires. They also have to pay a security deposit, often first month's rent, sometimes last month's rent, all to secure their move. Let us not forget that the lost wages that tenants lose in taking time off of work to search for a new place to live and to get all of these payments in. Not everyone has the opportunity or the luxury to have paid sick leave or vacation. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex, and then the next couple.
Alex Melendez, followed by Plymouth Ansbergs.
Good evening, Mayor. Medina, City Council and City Staff, thank you for bringing this so quickly to the dais. I know it was no easy task for anybody. My name is Alex, and I'm representing the nonprofit Housing Leadership Council, myself as a San Bruno resident, and as someone whose family has directly received one of these eviction notices in San Bruno. My uncle and their, you're about to hear this, but my uncle and their entire building received them on the 29th and were told to vacate, sorry, October 29th, and were told to vacate by December 31st. That's a difference of 24 hours before they would be covered by AB 1482. It's happening significantly in San Bruno and up and down the county, so much so that Menlo Park, South San Francisco, Redwood City, Daly City, San Carlos, San Mateo, and the County Board of Supervisors all passed emergency ordinances, all requiring the same supermajorities to protect their communities from these obvious-natured evictions. Mass evictions and rent increases are a bad public health problem that could be solved with good public policy. This emergency ordinance is that, a temporary measure, temporary, to protect the immediate public health and cover a loophole in the state law that is already going to be on the books by the end of the year. However, the reassuring impact in the lives of the San Bruno families who have already received these notices meets providing them protections that they would otherwise be provided to them, as I said earlier, with the difference of either a few weeks or, in my family's case, a few hours. You have the opportunity tonight to be active guardians of our community, and time is limited. Please pass an emergency ordinance tonight with temporary rent stabilization and just cause mirroring AB 1482 to let the very residents who brought this issue before you know that their families, renters, and my family are welcome to stay in San Bruno for the holidays. The true measure of any society, city, and jurisdiction can be found in how it treats its most vulnerable citizens. Thank you very much for your bravery and consideration.
Plymouth Ansbergs, followed by Tina Wong.
Hi, my spouse already spoke, so I think you know what our situation is. I wouldn't be directly affected by this rent eviction thing that's going on, but I was a renter fairly recently, and so I have a lot of empathy for people who are in that situation. I think this ordinance seems like a really good idea. I'm in support of it. My one concern is, I was reading some articles from a couple of the other cities who passed similar things, and it sounds like maybe it wouldn't apply to people who've already received the eviction notices before it passes. So I guess it seems like it might be somewhat symbolic, and that also sort of a question, like, will this cover people who've already received notices? Thank you.
Thank you.
Tina Wong, followed by Wayne Ho.
Hi, my name is Tina Wong, with the Chinese Real Estate Association of America and also BetterHousingPolicy.org. I'm also a broker, a real estate broker in San Bruno since the year 2000. I do manage properties. At the end of last year, I have an 85-year-old couple came into my office and told me I want to sell my six-unit apartment in East Side, San Bruno. I said, "Why?" Because I have two tenants peddling drugs and not paying me rent for one year, and I can't afford to hold on to my property anymore. So I said, "No, let me try to handle it for you so you could continue to have income." And so I probably evicted two tenants, because also there's been reports from the neighbors, from the same buildings, that their lives being endangered by these people. Are evictions be bad? No. Okay? It's helpful because there are two units of the tenants selling drugs, and there's strangers going into the apartment, and all the lives feel threatened. So please look into what's the urgency of adopting this ordinance. How many evictions other? Have you done any calculations? So please, I'm urging you then not to adopt this, and my client actually spent $150,000 after those two people moved out, what they have damaged. And they have raised rent, yeah, 10% from a three-bedroom, two-bath, and from $1,250 to $1,400. So yeah, that's more than 10%, but is it really a lot for a three-bedroom, two-bath? After they remodeled the whole building? I don't think so. So don't look at just one side. There's also another side of story. So I urge you, every one of you, please, there's property ownership rights. Please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Wayne Ho, followed by Carolina Peralas.
Thank you. Hi, thank you, thank you, City Council. A good evening. I speak on behalf of, I'm a real estate agent, also manage properties, but more importantly, I'm a resident of San Bruno. And I feel like this emergency ordinance would be very dangerous for our city if adapted, for the reason that, why, if you're making something that is legal at the time that was done illegal right now, then you could open, you know, potentially maybe lawsuit. I don't know, maybe the City Attorney can answer that. So from my experience, the landlord, they evict tenants due to multiple issues, but probably the most important one is the quality of the tenancy. So of course, that is being covered by the just cause part of the AB 1482, but however, because I, originally, I'm from San Francisco, so I knew how the rent control and the, you know, just cause eviction affects not just landlords, but also tenants. These so-called costs would be very hard to prove, and the tenants will always have legal aids, but the landlords will have to pay for them. So, but, you know, since this is already in effect, I would say the bigger picture is that rent control doesn't help to ease the housing crisis that we have. You know, the minute that you have rent control, the landlord's going to raise rent, you know? Like, we talked about that lady earlier in the meeting. She lived in the property Ms. Filling's house for 30 years. I don't think Ms. Filling raised too much rent, but imagine that if he has to, if there's a cap on it, he will raise rent, right? Because besides tenant has expenses, landlord have more. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Carolina Peralas, followed by Maria Esparza.
Good evening, my name is, good evening, my name is Carolina Peralas, and I'm representing Faith in Action Bay Area. I coordinate the community response line of San Mateo County. And we respond questions, and sometimes we refer all from people that have different questions about their situation on immigration or any concerns they have where their rights have been violated. Recently, we have been receiving a lot of calls about the rent increases, and when they heard a law was signed, they wanted to see if they were protected under this law, because many families were receiving eviction notices. I just want to put out the latest case that, and she gave me permission to talk about her without mentioning the name, but she has been living here for more than two years. This family pays already $34,000 for a two-bedroom apartment in Shelter Creek area. She has a 10-year-old girl with disabilities that attends Portola School in San Bruno, and she has a baby. The husband works two jobs in order to pay rent, and they receive a non-just cause, no cause eviction notice, and they had to leave before the end of the year. So my questions for you here is like, families in this city are waiting for you to be the firefighters to extinguish the fires that are happening right now with many families that are doing everything they can to keep living in the community they love. So please act immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Maria Esparza, followed by someone with the last name of Munoz.
Go ahead, please.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Maria Esparza. Estoy aquí porque hace algunos días recibí una carta desde el desalojo. Cuando abrí la puerta de mi apartamento, estaba la carta pegada en la puerta por afuera, y es una carta del desalojo sin causa justa. I'm here because a few weeks ago, my family received an eviction notice that was just posted at the door of our home. And it's a letter that said that we have to leave our place that we have been living for many years, and it doesn't have any cause why we have to leave. También estoy aquí esta noche para apoyar a mis hermanos y amigos e familiares de San Bruno. And I'm here to support other families like my own family that are in the same situation that mine. Es importante que esta noche ustedes como consilio tomen acción y hagan una causa justa. Es algo frustrante. Cuando viene la carta, nosotros tenemos que hablar, mis hermanos y yo. Tenemos que hablar con la familia, vienen los hijos. Tenemos que hablar de qué es esta carta. So I'm here tonight just to ask you to please act immediately, because it's really frustrated that, like, I'm assuming that my friends that are here present today, like mine, the adults can take these notices and try to do something, although it's difficult, but for the kids that are in the middle of a year's school, it's more difficult to receive this notice that they are probably not going to see their friends anymore. Cuando nosotros hablamos con nuestros hijos tenemos que decirles, nos están desalojando. Ellos dicen, "Mami, Daddy, ¿para dónde vamos a ir?" Y nosotros decimos, "I don't know, no sabemos." So it's really difficult to ask, to answer questions from our kids that they said when we said that we have to move soon, and they are asking us where we're going to leave, and we respond, "We don't know where we're going to do." Porque ahora estamos para celebrar Thanksgiving, las fiestas de Acción de Gracias, Navidad, Año Nuevo. Entonces, ¿qué vamos a, nosotros tenemos miedo salir a comprar la comida? Cuando regresemos, ¿qué tal que hayan cambiado la chapa? O también cuando tocan la puerta, nos asustamos, pensamos, ¿será el sheriff que viene a echarnos para afuera? So especially now that Thanksgiving is approaching, we are in fear. We don't even want to celebrate. We don't know if we go shopping and somebody's going to lock our things down, and the sheriff is going to come and, you know, take our things away. We don't know. We are living in a state of stress. Este año tenemos, cada fin de año tenemos que dar gracias porque Dios ha tenido misericordia de nosotros para darnos alimentos. Espero que todos los dueños y propietarios que tengan este lugar, cuando vayan a celebrar en sus mesas, ellos no piensen del daño que han hecho a las familias niños y ancianos.
Thank you, because there still needs to be translated, but it needs to keep in the time limit. Go ahead, please, out of respect.
So am I allowed to finally?
I'm asking you to please continue out of respect to the speaker. Yes, please, please finish your comments.
Okay, so what she said is that she's asking, now that we're going to celebrate Thanksgiving, she's asking all the homeowners to keep in mind all the families that are going to probably end up on the streets or living in their cars because they don't have other way to go.
Thank you.
Ms. Munoz, followed by Wendy Cruz.
Buenas noches, señores, respetables señores del Consilio y señor alcalde.
Good evening, respectful members of the council and mayor.
Mi nombre es Ligia Munoz. Estoy presente hoy ante ustedes para informarles la situación tan angustiante por la que estoy pasando con mi familia, ya que he recibido una orden de desalojo sin justa causa. En un momento en que se supone que debo estar muy feliz, estoy muy angustiada y estresada.
My name is Ligia Munoz, and I'm here to let you know that I'm in the same situation that other families, my family also received an eviction notice, and I'm in a state of stress that we don't know what we're going to do.
Esta situación afecta a toda nuestra comunidad. Estamos viviendo una angustia muy alta y una preocupación ante estas órdenes de desalojo.
This situation is affecting our community. We are in a situation that we don't know what to do, how to act, because it seems that we don't have many options.
Ser comunidad significa respetarnos los unos a los otros, respetar a los ancianos, respetar a los niños. respetar a los niños, y respetarnos como lo que somos, seres humanos.
Be a community means to respect one another, respect seniors, respect children, respect families. And that's what, for me, community is.
Hoy, 26 de noviembre, a unos días de quedarme sin un lugar en donde vivir, me pregunto, ¿a dónde me voy a ir si me echan de mi casa?
Today, November 26, probably days before I have to leave the place that I have been considering my home, I'm asking myself where I'm going to go.
Por eso hoy vengo ante ustedes a solicitarles muy humildemente...
That's why I come today to ask you, humbly ask you.
Que aprueben la ordenanza de emergencia y nos permitan celebrar con tranquilidad las fiestas como todos los merecemos.
To please approve this emergency ordinance, and that way, we're going to be able to celebrate with our families these holidays that are coming.
Porque al igual que los propietarios de los lugares donde vivimos, nosotros también merecemos agradecerle al Dios que nos protege de tener una familia feliz, un hogar, y un lugar en donde estar tranquilos con nuestros hijos.
Because our families, like the families of people, of landlords, we also have the right to celebrate and give thanks to our God that has given us many things during the year.
¿Se imaginan ustedes una noche como la de hoy, tan lluviosa?
Okay, thank you. Last translation, please.
Thank you.
Go ahead with the translation, please.
Okay. She just asked you to please imagine if your family has to leave out in a night like tonight, that it's raining and it's very cold outside.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Wendy Cruz, followed by Patricia Melendez.
Tengan todos muy buenas noches.
Good evening, everyone.
Mi nombre es Wendy Cruz.
My name is Wendy Cruz.
Soy madre de tres hijos.
I'm a mother of three children.
Y tenemos también una orden de desalojo.
And we have an eviction notice.
También queríamos esta noche con la fe en ustedes que pueden poner una orden de emergencia. Solo pedimos eso.
We are putting tonight our faith in you, members of the council, to vote and approve this emergency ordinance.
Solo pedimos eso porque queremos estar este fin de año seguros y queremos estar protegidos en un techo.
That is the only thing that we are asking you tonight, because we are, we would like to have an end of the year in a place that we are secure, under a roof that is going to protect us.
Y queremos esta noche darles las gracias por escucharnos.
And we want to thank you tonight for being able to listen to us.
Y también esta ciudad nos sentimos seguros, y nuestros hijos tenemos las escuelas también seguras, que es lo que más nosotros estamos afectados.
We feel secure in this community, and our children feel secure in their schools, too. So they are going to be affected, too, if an ordinance doesn't pass.
Y la fe de nuestra familia es estar protegidos en esta ciudad.
And our family has faith that we are going to continue being protected in this city.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Patricia Melendez, followed by Jordan Grimes.
Hello. My name is Patricia Melendez. I would like to thank you all for allowing me to speak tonight. On October 29, I, along with all of my fellow neighbors in the building where I reside for the past 10 years, received a 60-day notice of eviction. Of course, it came to all of us as a horrible shock, even more so during the holiday season. I have always paid my rent, as expected. I have never received any complaints about me. I consider myself a good tenant. I have heard and seen on the news about this happening everywhere, but you never think it will happen to you, and then it does, and it comes as a shock to you. You are helpless, the stress, the sleepless nights of not knowing what's going to happen. I have lived in San Bruno for 30 years. My children grew up here. They attend school here. And my six-year-old is asking me what's going to happen, and I literally do not have an answer for her. So I am here today to ask you for help. Help us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Jordan Grimes, followed by Susan Getchell Wallace.
Good evening, council. That's loud. Honorable mayor, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Jordan Grimes. I'm here both as a lifelong resident of Samatteo County, as well as a lead member of Peninsula for Everyone. We are a regional grassroots group of neighbors who advocate for, was become known as the three Ps of housing policy: production, preservation, and most importantly, tonight, protection. So as we all know by now, in the wake of AB 1482 signing by Governor Newsom early last month, unscrupulous landlords throughout the state have begun regretfully retaliating against tenants by issuing evictions and hiking rents ahead of the bill taking effect in January. These actions are in direct violation of the spirit of the law, if not the letter of it. I think it's important to note at this point in the evening that we aren't talking about the behavior of most landlords here. We're talking about bad apples who are evicting people and jacking up rents to capitalize on vulnerable tenants during a period of time in our collective history when stable, affordable housing has never been more scarce. I do just want to make a couple quick points regarding some of the things heard tonight. This ordinance will not halt housing production. In fact, multiple developers testified in favor, people who actually build housing testified in favor of the bill in Sacramento. The California Apartment Association was neutral on the bill, so that's an important point. But finally, I just want to say that those of you on the dais have the power to put a check on this kind of behavior. Housing advocates along the peninsula often hear elected officials extol the virtues, the virtues, excuse me, of local control. I hope you will use the power of local control for good tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Susan Getchell Wallace, followed by Elaine Gilbrek.
Good evening, honorable members of council. I'm Susan Getchell Wallace, and currently serving as a director on the SAMCAR Board of Directors. I'm here this evening to advise members of council that the SAMCAR Board of Directors recently met and approved a resolution to establish a task force and approved, and approved, approved a resolution to establish a task force to help Samatteo County tenants with some of the short-term unintended consequences of AB 1482. First, our task force is to be a source for displaced tenants to seek assistance in finding a new place to live. We are experts in quickly finding replacement housing and have a history of helping in doing so. Second, until the new law goes into effect, January 1, 2020, SAMCAR has established a fund to assist tenants that have received a rent increase since the governor signed the new bill into law that is in excess of the March 15, 15, 2019 rollback rent base plus 9% as allowed. We understand under AB 1482 that landlords are not required to reimburse tenants for this rent gap. Tenants that feel they have received a rent increase in excess of what the law will allow are welcome to apply to SAMCAR for a grant to be reimbursed for this difference. In closing, we're asking you to remove the rent control component in Section 4 and the retroactive component of Section, in Section...
Three, four?
Anyway, and the retroactive, yeah, I'm losing my pace here, and the retroactive component of Section 4 in the proposed emergency ordinance. We ask that you do not create more unintended consequences because of an isolated, isolated or isolated situations that can be addressed and resolved together. Please note that 100% of the funds allocated for this grant program are from our local association of Realtors and affiliate members who are also residents, neighbors helping neighbors.
Thank you. And from the audience, please, let me, allow me to be able to ask the speaker to wind up. Thank you.
Elaine Gilbrek, followed by Rafael Cons.
Thank you, mayor and city council. My name's Elaine Gilbrek. I'm the executive officer of Samatteo County Association of Realtors, also known as SAMCAR. We're a not-for-profit, and our members are Realtors and property owners. So I'm here to speak tonight to ask you not to pass this urgency ordinance. We are doing many educational programs for our property owners, and they're following the law to a T now and intend to follow it when AB 1482 goes into effect in January. So we don't feel that there is a need for an urgency ordinance now. Most of our property owners are what's known as mom and pops and are not the ones hurting people. And the evictions that have been put into place were done so legally at the time, so if you do choose to pass the ordinance, we ask you move any, remove any part that's retroactive, because you can't punish someone who was following the law at the time. You can't make something illegal that they did that was legal at the time that would make them not in compliance. And I also want to point out that most of the mom and pops are your below-market rate property providers in this county, and we've researched to know that that's true. So thank you for your time tonight, and we hope that you don't pass this urgency ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Rafael Cons, followed by former mayor Larry Franzella.
Good evening. My name is Rafael Cons, and I'm a property owner and a good, you know, a great landlord. I am against rent control. I'm not here to tell you the problems of rent control. We all know that there are many. And we all know there are good and bad property owners. So instead of demonizing all of us, why don't you have a committee that deals with these bad ones? Demonizing all property owners like myself for the problems that a very few are causing is wrong. Not everything is a black or white issue. There is a gray area. Use that gray area. Please do not make the legal action of a small mom and pop property owner, excuse me, in San Bruno that was performed a month ago illegal tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Franzella, followed by Maureen Mitchell.
Thank you. Larry Franzella, you're here tonight with 35 days remaining in the calendar year. To increase rent up to 10% takes a 30-day notice. The new law goes into effect four days later, which would roll it back, so at worst, a tenant is going to have to pay four days of that potentially, potential extra 1%. It's pennies. To increase it more than 10% takes a 60-day notice, and the new law is in effect. Then you're looking at penalizing property owners who were within their rights and acted within the law and gave notice, and, in my opinion, bringing some potential liability to the city to possibly defend that action. Wrapping it up, this is just an ordinance that you don't need to bother with 35, with 35 days remaining in the year. It's time to use a little common sense and let your staff do some things that can really help people. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Maureen Mitchell, followed by Daniel Lee.
Good evening, council and fellow San Bruno. I've lived in San Bruno for 20 years, and I have been a renter for more than half of my life. And it really breaks my heart to hear about people being evicted, especially at this time of year. Currently, I have a small condo, and I can tell you the rent is very low, and I keep it that way because I like the tenants and I want them to stay. And also, that condo is my retirement, and so I do want to keep it up, and I want to keep it in good condition. So, but this ordinance, what I have issues with is that it's retroactive. And laws, for me, laws are to the future, that you know what you're getting into versus being retroactive. So I realize that there's two sides to this issue, and it's a very, very difficult issue. So...
Daniel Lee, followed by Gina Zari.
Hi. My name is Daniel Lee. I would like to stress that I am an immigrant, minority, Asian, mom and pop, small property owner, and doing business with the city of San Bruno on Samatteo Avenue. And we have a very good relationship with, with the city of San Bruno. We were discriminated from where I was born, the country. We escaped, we escaped the dictatorship, what I was told what to do. We hated it. We hated it. I have no, I have no problem with the CPA plus 5% increase in the rent. However, we are looking forward that it's going to be reduced in the future. I do have a problem with the just cost eviction. In, in Puerto Rico, I was trying to evict a tenant who is selling drugs in the premises parking lot. I, we were not able to evict the tenant. I mean, the legal aid society came in, and then it was a mess. It would cost us another $20,000 to just initiate the eviction process, and then my wife and I figured it out. Look, if it's going to cost me $20,000, he can stay there, let the neighbors suffer it, and then the tenant can stay there, so we don't evict him. It's very difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Gina Zari, followed by Ravi Lin Antonio.
Mayor Medina, council members, good evening. I find myself in a triage position where I'm submitting my slip late to try to respond to some items that are incorrect. First of all, only three jurisdictions have actually passed retroactive ordinances dealing with evictions, and it's recently been determined that those are illegal ordinances. Eight have turned them down. That's the first item. The second item is, I have spoken with the property manager of the building in San Bruno, had a very long conversation along with my CEO today on the phone. None of the situations, none of the units that are covered by this, this individual, this property owner, this owner, would be affected by any retroactive or prospective ordinance you could pass. They cited retrofit, extensive retrofit. And as a matter of fact, in that building, they haven't done remodeling of the kitchens or bathrooms for 30 years. I understand the timing is bad. It's before the holidays. I understand the timing is bad. It's immediately after the passage of 1482, yet it doesn't take away the fact that those units need to be remodeled. Wouldn't be covered by this ordinance. I just want to stress how important it is that you understand that going back, creating, creating an ordinance that would retroactively change behavior that's already taken place is extremely, it's extremely onerous. It's, it decimates property rights. In San Bruno, you've got some tremendous property owners, very few of, if any, bad actors. Even the instances that you heard of tonight were not bad actors. I haven't heard of a single instance of a bad actor. It's an unfortunate situation, bad timing perhaps, but 30 years to have not remodeled a bathroom and a kitchen is, that's not unreasonable. That's a reasonable, reasonable suggestion that they're making. And I guess that's it. Thank you.
Ravi Lin Antonio.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Ravi Lin Antonio with the California Apartment Association. We are a nonprofit trade association that represents rental property owners. I wanted to focus my comments tonight on the practical value of having Section 4 in your ordinance, and this is the one to implement local rent control in the city of San Bruno. I want to repeat that if the intent of the council is to prevent exorbitant rent increases happening from now until December 31st, I believe that San Bruno already has its mechanisms in place to take care of that. One would be the state of emergency that was signed by the governor as of October 27th, but also extended on November 22nd. It activated under California Penal Code, an anti-gouging law that says rental housing cannot be, the rents cannot be raised no more than 10% during the state of emergency. So that covers our period right now until January 1st. But there's also the embedded rollback in AB 1482, as staff presented, that rents will immediately go back to March 2019 levels as of January 1st. It already has that mechanism that even if there was a rent increase that was, that was given, March 16th, that, even if it was at 80%, that rent will go back to whatever it was, March 15th. it was, March 15th as of January 1st. And as former Mayor Larry Franzella mentioned, the 60-day notice also applies. Also wanted to mention that in the ordinance, another reason why you cannot move forward with Section 4 is that the last sentence of that provision actually violates Costa Hawkins state law because it puts price controls on single-family homes, condos, as well as post-1995 properties and that is illegal under state law. That's not, 1482 can put price controls on single-family homes, but not local jurisdictions. That's what Costa Hawkins limits you in doing. Didn't finish. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more speaker cards? Is there anybody we missed? Okay. Anything staff wants to say before we bring it back to council? Attorney? City attorney?
Just, just a couple of comments. The members of the public made a few comments. One of the questions was about legal risk, might we get sued? And the answer is, well, we don't know. Lots of people can sue the city. It's hard for us to speculate who might or might not sue under what circumstances. So, we can't really say much about that. What we can say is that the provisions of the ordinance that are referred to as retroactive as currently drafted, if your eviction notice hadn't expired by the effective date of the ordinance, which is tomorrow, then the ordinance would protect you. If the city council decides that that provision should not be included, then in essence, there's no reason to adopt the ordinance because it takes 60 days' notice to evict people and the 60 days would not expire until after January 1st. So, the way the ordinance is drafted, there is a, I don't know that I would call it retroactive. It's a, the provisions of the ordinance reach back to notices of eviction that have not yet expired as of the date of the ordinance. And that protects people who, whose eviction date would be between now and the end of the year.
All right. Thank you. So, let's bring it to council for questions. I'm sure they're, Michael.
Through the chair. Thank you. So, what I'm wondering is, so, I have, I have some concerns with, with the action, but who could not be moved by what we've heard here tonight? And I'm wondering if we were to do this tonight, if we were to put this in place, all it really does, it doesn't give the city any authority to do anything, but it would give the, the renters the ability to challenge this in court. So, if we were to give them that ability to go do that, realistically, would it keep them in their homes through the end of the year or could an eviction that, that's in place still be enforceable by the owners in spite of their ability to, to challenge it?
So, so I'll, I'll take that. It's a good question. You know, normally, the city does not get involved in the private relations between landlords and tenants and the City of San Bruno has generally not been involved in those relationships economically over, over at least the last decade. However, one of the things to point out is that it's almost impossible for city staff to answer the sort of, what about this situation? What about that situation? Who is it going to help? Who is it going to hurt? Without knowing the specifics of each because as we've heard tonight, there may be circumstances with the tenants and circumstances with landlords that the city is not privy to and really doesn't have any obvious way of, of finding out. So, what we can say about the ordinance is that it would allow tenants to stay in their properties until the end of the year if they've received an eviction notice that is effective before the end of the year. And whether those tenants would go to court or whether they would have gone to court anyway, or whether they would stay and hold over after the holidays or do a whole variety of things is really something that, that city staff isn't able to comment on. But we can tell you what the ordinance would do and what its effect is.
Okay. And that was really the, the gist of it is, would it allow people to stay in spite of the fact that the eviction had already been?
No. This, this particular ordinance, if, if your, if the eviction notice has expired before today, then this ordinance does not protect those tenants. It's only if the eviction notice were to expire between tomorrow and the end of the year would this ordinance apply.
Right. And that's what I was afraid of. I'll let my colleague, I.
Marty or Laura?
I think this goes through the city attorney. So, kind of going on with Michael, I, I wanted to have a better understanding of a theoretical eviction. So, someone here that got a notice in the last week, their legal recourse is what?
So, if someone got a notice for eviction in the last week and if that was a 60-day notice, they would be protected by state law because the notice does not expire until after the 1st of January. So, this ordinance would not do anything one way or another for that individual. The main people that it potentially protects are those people who have received an eviction notice before today and which notice would expire between tomorrow and the end of the year.
Okay. And if the renter wanted to fight it, they would be able to pursue that through, through court and they would have additional time to do that? How, how does that work?
So, that question is probably best directed to the organizations that represent tenants in court on a regular basis. The city does not do that.
Okay. Is there anybody available? So, so what happens?
Hold on, real quick, please.
You have to go to the microphone.
Could you go to the podium, please? And, and, and once Mr. Medina asks you the question, if you can identify the group or so we understand the affiliation when you're responding?
So, just disclaimer, I'm not a lawyer, but I work with Legal Aid Society of San Mateo County. I'm a project coordinator, so I often take intake. So, I am familiar with the eviction process if you have any questions.
Right. So, somebody who is getting evicted and they, they go ahead and come to you and say, well, we have nowhere to go and they wanted to fight it. And, and the idea there, I guess the gist of my question is, is making sure that those that, that are being evicted, that have received those eviction notices, that they're not just going to be on the street.
So, there is a process that is followed after the notice expires. So, usually, so basically, this ordinance would provide a legal argument for tenants to have in court. So, after the notice expires, the next step would be the landowner to go to the court and file what is called an unlawful detainer to try to gain possession over the property. And then after that, they would have five days to respond, five court dates. We usually help them provide the answer, the fee waivers to get that in on time. After that, there would be, the landowner would go back to court and try to set up a date for settlement conference, which is an opportunity to see if they can come to an agreement before going to trial. So, that whole process between the notice expiring to them actually having the sheriff come and take them out, out of their, their apartment or the unit that they're living in is usually four to six weeks. But again, this ordinance would give them a legal argument if they go to court or some way to negotiate in settlement conference. Do you have any other questions or any hypothetical situation that you would like to put out there for me to kind of clarify how it would work out?
Well, I'm, I think I'm good with you. I was going to ask specifics about the ordinance and for the just cause. Or, I'm sorry, I get confused, but you can go back a couple of slides, please. Okay. So, there's the examples of no fault, right? So, if some, if somebody is getting evicted and it's at no fault, what the AB 1482 allows is one month of rent for relocation purposes. So, by the council vote approving this ordinance, that, that would provide a month's protection or months of rent for, for, for just cause evictions.
That's correct. And if the council were to adopt the ordinance, essentially, all of the provisions or all of the provisions that the city council directs us of AB 1482 would apply between now and the end of the calendar year.
Okay.
Real quick, Marty, did you want to hear on those topics that you had from, anybody else from the realtor side? If there's a different, or did you want to get more data?
If they want to comment on that.
Is there anybody that just want to be? And also, if you could do the same and identify which organization you're with, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide a response. Ravi Lin Antonio, again with the California Apartment Association. So, Councilmember Medina, the question was, of my understanding, what is the recourse right now if anybody were to receive a 60-day notice before 1482 were to take effect? I wanted to sure, you know, provide some relief to the council and to the community members that because of the statewide state of emergency signed by Governor Newsom, it also covers evictions. That is new. That one was added in after the Santa Rosa fires last year. So, under California Penal Code 396, it also states that residential properties, that people within residential units cannot be evicted during the state of emergency that's proclaimed by the governor or the president. So, in addition to that, it also removes the financial incentive to evict somebody for the sole purpose of raising the rent up to market rent. That's also, it makes it a misdemeanor, actually, under the California Penal Code 396. So, again, the initial state of emergency was signed October 27th. So, I heard some dates about eviction notices being given out October 29th, two weeks ago. That is covered under the state of emergency and then it was extended again on November 22nd.
Thank you.
Councilmember Medina, if I may, I'm compelled to make a comment about that. So, the information that, that we have in the language of the Attorney General's provision on his FAQ page says that the provision against eviction applies to a situation in which the landlord is looking to or has re-rented the property at a rate that the landlord would have been prohibited from charging. So, the prohibition on evictions is, is really only related to price gouging and is not related to all the other myriad fault or no-fault reasons that people might or might not be evicted for. And so, in those situations, the, once the tenant has already been evicted, it may be difficult for the tenant to establish that the landlord has or has not increased the rent and whether that increase has or has not been more than what was allowed under, under state law. Does that make sense?
It's a little confusing for me. I don't know about anybody else up here, but, but I'm, I think it comes down to this, right? We have people here in this room that are taking time out on one side or the other, but those people here who are renting, what, what are they going to do? And they're coming here and they're asking for a filler of the gap that the law didn't provide. The law, my understanding of it, did a, did a poor job of, of creating the situation. And once again, cities are dealing with the mess that the state generated. And I'd like to fill that gap. Now, I guess here's the question and whomever can answer it. You can't stop an eviction. You're going to go to court and, and it seems to me like the, the biggest thing that someone will get out of this is a month of rent for relocation purposes. Mr. Or?
Well, they, they, they may or may not get that. They may also get protections from evictions that are not based on just cause or if there is an alleged just cause by the landlord, the landlord would have the opportunity to prove that up in court. So, ultimately, a judge is going to decide whether the eviction proceeds or not.
Okay. But if it wasn't for a just cause, if, if, some of the stories that we, that I heard today were that I've been paying my rent, everything's fine and now I got this eviction notice and, and in 60 days, I need to leave. And the question asked to, that was asked about, well, what happens is then you can go to court, but at some point, you're likely going to be evicted. And, and the, the recourse by us passing this would be one that you would get a month of relocation expenses. And then it's in the court's hand, court's hand to decide, but it's a, it's a little bit more of a protection. It's not a guarantee that you're, you're, you're going to get evicted.
I think you're correct, Councilmember Medina, that this law does not guarantee that any tenant or any landlord is going to prevail in their court action. There's no guarantee of that right now. So, if a tenant's eviction notice, for example, were to expire between now and the end of the year and they do not move out, then the landlord, as was explained, can go to court, file an unlawful detainer case and that person may or may not be evicted next year. What this urgency ordinance would do and the effect of it is, it would keep tenants in their units until the first of the year so that the state law can become effective and then the parties are going to be bound by the provisions of that new state law.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Mike, would you want anything back before I talk?
So, I mean, there's a lot, a lot of layers to this onion and, and it does seem like the state took some precautions in creating some protections and left some gaps. And so, we're hearing generalities and so if we pass an ordinance, it is very much a generality that applies across the board. So, we may be trying to use a hammer to fix a, a very small issue and we may be completely missing the problem. And part of what I heard tonight is that if the people that are here that are at risk of losing their homes, they've been evicted because of what's listed up there, intent to demolish or substantially remodel the unit, none of this matters. None of this applies. And I am far more interested in helping our current residents to find a resolution to this problem. And even if it's just a deferral, even if we can somehow keep them in their homes through the holidays and we deal with this later. And I know we have no authority to do that directly, but we, we do have some representatives here that I know and I've talked to council members in other cities that have created advocacy boards that help deal with this. And rather than pass some legislation that has zero effect just so that I can go home and sleep tonight, it is not, it's not going to cut it for me. And I would really like to see some mechanism that can help us as elected people work with whatever groups are willing to work with us to defer this. And it, it could be that there's a lot of deferred maintenance on, on the property in question, but choosing to start that project at the beginning of the rainy season and, you know, during the holidays, it, it seems like a pretty crappy thing to do to people personally. And so, I, I would, I would look for, I would like to hear somebody propose something that actually addresses that problem, the, the concerns that we've heard here tonight. And it doesn't sound to me like anything in this resolution would actually address that.
You mean the ordinance?
The ordinance.
Okay. Thank, hold, hold on, please.
So, I'm going to, since most of the council who wanted to speak at this point, I'm going to say this is something that, you know, came up and we certainly brought it forward. We put on to staff in a very short window, not to be able to go get statistical data and other detailed information, which puts it hard on staff. So, it's saying, hold this, do this. So, I appreciate staff doing that. For me personally, Councilmember Salazar, you said some of it, on the rent stabilization with the current structure that's in place with state of the emergency and the extension that has occurred and with it being rolled back to 2019 of March, I don't know that the rent stabilization that's placed in the ordinance is really what we're hearing tonight, nor is it a factor in, in my mind at this point because of the safeguards that are now in place, unfortunately, to do to this state of emergency with all the fires that we've had. The other thing is, is that, like you just said, I have spent some time on this. I have spoken to colleagues in Daly City, South City, Milbrae, Burlingame, San Mateo and the County of San Mateo, just to get a perspective. And yes, I watched another city's full, or city council meeting regarding this topic because I wanted to see firsthand and understand it. Now, as I watched that, what I did watch was some speakers that came up and said, we're going to, we can assist. We can offer. We can offer resources. Yes, there's the county, but I also know in all reality, private entities sometimes can move the ball faster, give immediate assistance to, in 24 hours, not in three weeks. So, I am in the same boat of, you know, the retroactivity concerns me because to pass a, an ordinance, an emergency ordinance that says what you did legally is now illegal is a concern to me. I think there is some risk, potentially. But I think more importantly, it's like, how do we help folks? I know I spoke to city staff and thank you to city manager, thank you, Darcy and Mark, who put together a sheet just of information, because my point is too, not everybody may know the resources that are available. I really would like to see, I know there's a task force, but watching the other city to the south where it was brought up, that there are monies for, to help in the gap of the rent until it rolls back to March, that there are opportunities. So, let us help relocate if that's the need, that's the necessity. And so, I would like to see those folks come together, together, because everybody has what they believe is right, but really, what's right is taking care of those people that are displaced. So, that's what I would like to see. And with us having X number of days left in this, the year, and then 1482 takes effect, that's where I would concur that I'd rather see a prospective, proactive, and a resolution to help those that need it. And we have people here that I think are willing to do that. Is there any other? Laura?
I didn't have any questions earlier, but I guess I should make my comments. So, I, I'm in total agreement. You cannot pass a law and then go back on that. I think that San Bruno is filled with amazing landlords, that landlords that are not here, the majority of landlords are being fair. They're, I mean, I, I know a number of them, and, and they, they do the right thing. And so, we have a law that we've passed, that's going to be passed. They're doing the right thing. We got a lot of older properties, so maybe they do want it to remodel. I mean, we heard that for 30 years, the bathrooms haven't been remodeled or faucets haven't been remodeled, that it's a fair thing that they want to evict, they want to remodel and then bring somebody else in. I think shame on those landlords, if you're out there, and that during this window of opportunity, that you are evicting tenants during this period of time for the means of profits, shame, shame, shame on you. But I don't think that's the problem here. I think that for those residents who fall into the, they've received an eviction notice, I think we need to direct them to agencies, thank you for being here tonight, if anybody's spoken out, to agencies that can support them, that can help them, that can find and get into a better place with a landlord that is fair and reasonable, and you can stay there for 30 years. This is, this, this urgency notice is for a small minority, and I don't think we should pass an urgency ordinance for the majority.
And I'm just, and it was hit on, but again, I get frustrated that Sacramento passes something and yet leaves it to all the jurisdictions throughout the state to try to make, figure a way and brings this here. And that's what's, that's what's unfortunate. They must remember, because some of them were council members or supervisors, what they do up there in Sacramento affects all of us down here. And what they should have done is have it take effect immediately. A lot of time has gone by, but again, that's how it was signed. So, that is the unfortunate part. And, you know, as a former renter, I was blessed. And she lives in town. She was great. They were both great. He's passed on, she's still here. And so, I understand that. My mother's been a renter here in San Bruno. So, I do get when you have it, when you have it good and you don't. And my mother always has said and still says, you know, comes around, goes around. Karma's horrible. It may not come today, but it will come. So, those that take advantage of anyone during any time, not just the holidays, karma exists, because my mother can't be wrong. So, with that, I understand that staff, city attorney, city manager, it requires a four-fifths vote. I'm, I'm getting, requires all, all four of us. So, I'm getting the impression there may not be four votes. Do we still need to have the resolution or just see if somebody wants to introduce it?
It does certainly appear that way to me. However, if somebody would like to make a motion, they're welcome to do so.
Does anybody want to?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes, Marty.
I'd like to introduce the ordinance.
Is there a second to the resolution? Hearing, I'm going to ask again, is there a second to the resolution? Hearing none, then it dies for lack of second, and it did need all four of us in the affirmative. So, with that, then?
The motion would fail because there was a lack of a second.
And through the chair?
Yes, please, Michael.
A couple of things. So, I want to thank staff for the work that they put into this. And even though we, we didn't support what was presented, I know there wasn't a recommendation one way or the other, but I, I do think this conversation here was important. And I saw a reaction from the representative from the Apartment Owners Association, and I was wondering if we could hear from her on, and from Sam Carr, if, if there are some other options that we have as-
And for those folks that are coming, leaving, and you have this situation, I understand that. If you have this situation, maybe they can add, give you some aid and assistance.
Please.
So, I'd like, or at least exchange a phone number, maybe? Or just exchange a phone number or something?
And I didn't get, can you hear me?
Thank you.
Good. I, I didn't get to say this, I didn't have enough time, but we do have a task force, as Susan said. I have been successful in finding places in Burlingame, Milbrae, along, all along the peninsula, helping find tenants that have been displaced, find places to live. As long as they pay their rent and they have no criminal record, it is a very easy thing to do. And I would say, to compliment this city in particular, San Bruno, you have very affordable rents. Your median rent is about 1,500. That's incredibly affordable. You should be proud of that. And we can find these tenants a place to live. If they contact you, you can contact me at Sam Carr, you can contact our CEO, Elaine right there, Susan, who, who made the announcement. Please tell me, and I will help find them a place to live.
Is that what you want, right? How are you?
Thank you again.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Roevee Anne Antonio again from California Apartment Association. Wanted to also provide some clarifications when there was a resident who was asking, talking about receiving an eviction notice in Shelter Creek. You know, if they were to contact us, we could clarify that, yes, it's, it's unfortunate that they receive a 60-day notice, but Shelter Creek wouldn't help them in, in this ordinance anyways because Shelter Creek is a condo, so they would be exempt. But I, I could, I could provide the technical information as well. Wanted to also send kudos to the city staff for creating a dedicated website homepage on AB 1482. I did have the opportunity to review it this afternoon prior to coming to this meeting, and all the information is correct. However, what's missing there is some resources for property owners to be able to, you know, to educate themselves on the new laws so they don't inadvertently violate laws that would help, that would hurt tenants. So, we would ask to be added to that list of resources as well because we also provide technical information for property owners on what AB 1482 will be in January 1, what forms and disclosure statements that is required under the law to ensure that all property, that all renters will know their rights, roles and responsibility come January 1. But most importantly, our Housing Industry Foundation also provides housing assistance programs when there's a state of, when there's an emergency, and we move in the speed of business. We can dispense housing assistance program up to $2,500 within 24 hours to the landlord if there is a housing issue. We, it can go towards paying for security deposits, missing rent, or even utilities. And another opportunity also is, and I tried to provide this information to the property, to the renters who were leaving, but they didn't want to receive, they didn't want to take my flyer, but I'm more than happy to share it with the city. But there's also the renovation program that people could apply to, to see if funds could be used to help reva, rehab, rehab some of the properties that would qualify. And we also have a affordable housing initiative that would also help provide rental assistance, replacement housing for below-market rate units. Thank you.
And I'd like to ask of staff through the clerk's office, if they call, or for whatever department, if there are folks that have called in the two units or two situations that I'm aware of, only two that I'm aware of, if they be given these resources and an outreach. I don't mean just email, I mean a phone call, I mean a contact number. I believe Gina Roevee would be willing and to assist, and that's, that's the most important thing to me, is that we are going the extra mile, we are doing something, and we are giving them the resources and the revenues if necessary, if they're available. And through the chair-
Michael.
One additional request, and this is toward, toward the city attorney, is could we potentially reach out to the landlord and ask them to reconsider their decision and, and their timing? And I know we have no authority to force them to do anything, but would it be completely out of line for us to make that request?
I, I would say that you could certainly request, and I think you have requested from the dais tonight to the landlords. I think enmeshing city staff in private disputes between landlords and tenants about whether they should or shouldn't be evicted is something that is not within staff's particular level of expertise.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay.